June meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the meeting. For those of you that are new to the procedure, the ZBA meetings are divided into two halves. During the first half, we will hold public hearings on each of the applications and we'll consider them in the order in which they're found on the agenda. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, they're available in the little tray by our council's desk. In the public hearing, we will ask each applicant to come forward to state their name for the record and to be sworn in. All comments before the zoning board of appeal have to be under oath. At that time, we'll ask each applicant to give a very brief description of why they are here. Following that, members of the board will ask questions to gather further information. When the board has finished its questions, the floor will be open to any member of the public that wishes to address the board on that application, but on that application only. If, when there are no further comments, no further questions from the board, we will close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Once we've held all of the public hearings, in this case, on the eight items on the agenda, we will then enter into the deliberation phase. During this period, there's no further public comment, though certainly people are welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. The board will discuss each of the applications and then we will vote on them. If you want to stay and hear the discussion, fine. If not, you can call the zoning department in the morning for the results. Also on the agenda are a number of correspondence items. These are largely matters of procedure involving which branch of the town is going to be lead agency for environmental purposes. Most people don't find those very interesting, but you can stay. Okay. So, turning to the agenda, item number one, Rutberg-Breslau Personal Injury Law, 3344 Route 9 North. Recently, we received a request from the applicant asking for an adjournment. He's unable to be here. I think it's important that the applicant be here. We had a number of questions last time, so I would move that we adjourn item number one to our next meeting, which would be July 14th.
Mr. Charon, I have to recuse myself on that one.
Okay.
Do you need to substitute me?
I think for the purpose of an adjournment, we don't need to. So, okay. So, on the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And there's one recusal.
Yeah.
Okay. Sandy, did I get that right? It's July 14th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Bestial Day. That's traditionally not a good day for lawyers.
Thank you, Jim.
Not a good day for lawyers.
Right. We'll just let that one go. Okay. Item number two, Simply Gourmet, 10 IBM Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. And so if you'd just state your name and be sworn in.
My name is Thomas Walsh.
Mr. Walsh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. And you're representing your sign company?
Yeah, my company is Sign Language.
Yeah.
Representing Mike Palowski.
Okay.
From Simply Gourmet.
Okay. So, what can you briefly describe what it is that you're proposing?
Sure. The sign that you see in front of you in the Gable Peak is a non-illuminated sign. It's acrylic cut letters, and they would be stud-mounted flush to the building. If you went out to the site, you would see the Bluestone Bistro would be the same type of letters that are stud-mounted to the fascia there. The sign is well under the size requirement. Two signs are allowed, but in this case, the second sign would only be allowed on the side of the building. If you take a look at the picture, it's on the right side. Really, it's not a good spot to install the sign there, and visibility is horrible. So, since there is a peak there that occupies his frontage, he was looking to put his sign in that spot.
Okay. Now, just to clarify this, by his, so the sponsor, your client, is also the owner of the Bluestone Bistro?
Yes.
Okay. So, this represents basically two businesses that are operating in the same location?
Yeah. Simply Gourmet is basically a catering business, and the Bluestone Bistro is a restaurant.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make that clear because when you first look at it, you think, oh, this is two entirely different establishments, and you look closely and there's no door for Simply Gourmet.
Yeah. Simply Gourmet is something that he's always had. He just opened Bluestone Bistro, but Simply Gourmet is his business that he's always had, so it's an established business.
Okay. Okay. Good. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no question.
All right.
No questions.
Okay. And my main issue was just clarifying who the responsible business was, the fact that it's, one is the catering operation of the restaurant.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Larry?
Questions.
Paul?
Was there anything from the county on this? Anything from the county?
No.
Okay. Then I have no questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the application, Simply Gourmet and IBM Road? Okay. Hearing done. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would just note for members of the board, you should find in front of you the staff report on this application, and we'll consider that when we come to deliberation. Okay. Item number three, 51 Fairview Corporation at 51-53 Fairview Avenue. Okay. Gentlemen, if you'd just both state your names.
I'm Jacob Billig. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Okay.
Joseph Hurwitz. I'm Joseph Hurwitz and associate architect.
Mr. Billig and Mr. Hurwitz, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes. If you understand.
Okay. Would you like to just introduce the application for us?
Yes, well, I will do that. The application is for a use variance. The applicant previously ran a pizzeria. The business has been closed for a period of time. The other entity that I represent is the bank, which holds the mortgage. They had commenced a foreclosure proceeding by other counsel. During that proceeding, a transaction was arranged with a potential buyer. The buyer indicated that he wanted to run the business as it was previously run as a pizzeria restaurant. That led to the bank hiring myself, and we then subsequently met with representatives of the town's building department to discuss the potential application and the town's position. And we were told that the town would rather see the old established business as some type of eatery restaurant continue as opposed to it being residential. So, we went through the process of working out the contracts with the potential buyer. Part of your record is the proxy that we have to move forward on the seller's behalf. I will disclose to you that last week, the buyer indicated that they did not want to go through with the transaction, but the, and we returned the down payment. The seller, however, has indicated that they will provide a deed in lieu to the bank in the upcoming weeks in order to transfer title back to the bank and avoid the foreclosure proceeding. The bank asked me to show up tonight, and I have Mr. Hurwitz, who did the opinion letter on the variance, so as to allow for the variance to exist, which the bank believes will enhance the ability to find a buyer. Mr. Hartwick is here, representative of the bank, and they told me they've had some difficulty with it. So, we wanted to continue the proceedings before you seeking the variance. We think it, the use as a restaurant makes sense. It's something that we've heard the town wants to continue. I could pass the ball over to Mr. Hurwitz for a second, and he could kind of go through some of the issues that are in his opinion letter.
Thank you. I think it's most critical when you're granting a variance in a residential area or areas such as this, as to what extent would the granting of variance alter the nature of the area. A number of years ago, I did a facility on Yugenott Street, which is the historic district of New Poles, and there, we, very specifically, whatever we did had to be within the context of buildings which clearly were built of the 18th century. So, I'm well aware of the fact that in granting any kind of variance, especially in a historic district, which this is not, by the way, and probably that's my point, one has to be very careful about establishing a precedent, which in the future may bind your hands. That clearly is not the case here. Although it's a residential area, right across the street is a large industrial complex, which I would argue is completely out of scale already. So, there's not a consistent fabric about the area, in the area, by which the granting of variance would change the essential character. It really is not the case. The building in question is a one-story framed building, and immediately adjacent, but left, to its immediate left and right, are buildings of framed construction as well, two stories, I think some one-story buildings. A wide street separates it. So, I see absolutely no reason why there would be any sense at establishing a precedent whereby you can alter the area of a neighbor would be the result of what you're doing.
So, we again submitted a package to the board, and just emphasize, since that date, the potential buyer has stepped out. However, we would ask that the board grant the variance. We believe as the bank moves forward to retake title, this will enhance the ability of that institution to then sell it to a buyer, who we think makes sense for the town in terms of that neighborhood. So...
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah. Clearly, some things have changed since the original paperwork was submitted, okay? And I think, I think we're going to have to be careful in sorting this out. Actually, I think my first question directed to our council, given the circumstances, to whom or to what would a use variance be granted?
You would be granting it to the owner, but it would run with the land.
Okay. So, it may be the...
So, if you grant, I mean, you'd grant...
The 51 Fairview Corporation, but it may be to a bank?
Ultimately, it would be to a bank, and then the successor owner runs with the land anyway.
Runs with the land. Okay. So, whoever then acquires it would have the use variance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And the proposed use is restaurant? Okay. And broadly defined?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess limited to the square footage of the building. You know, someone will, whoever the buyer would be, you know, I 100% agree with counsel, had the transaction not stopped, the same would have been true. We have the owner's proxy. We would have sought the variance. There would have been transactions, and then subsequently transferred title similar. There'll be a little more of a gap of time. I can't predict how long. But the square footage of the building will probably dictate the type of eating establishment, which I wouldn't want to speculate about any further than that.
Okay. Okay. The reason I wanted to get absolutely clear on this is that there was reference in the application to, in fact, a specific buyer and a specific kind of eatery?
Yes.
Okay.
He had an intention for some type of pizza establishment, or, and I think he was also planning on maybe doing breakfast in the morning. He had even started to develop plans, which are now sort of moot, or maybe whoever buys it will inherit those plans.
Okay. Okay. No. I, thank you for being candid with us.
We're under oath.
It's complicated.
And I think it said in the staff review that this'll, Brian might correct, this'll go through site plan approval. Whatever restaurant goes in there would have to go through site plan approval.
Yes.
Yes. Right.
And then the variance also, there's probably a time limit on the, we looked that up, though, in the town code, but there's a time limit on the variance here.
We think it's, we think it's a year.
Use also?
Right.
Yeah. So, that's the other thing that comes into play. If they don't get a buyer within a year and start running a restaurant within a year, or at least get an application in...
The variance lapses.
They'd have to come back again.
Yes.
But they're this far, so...
Okay. Correct.
Okay. I have a number of questions, but I, let's let some of the other board members ask theirs first. Carmen?
Depending on the kind of restaurant it is, it might affect how we're viewing this whole use variance. I mean, it could be a restaurant slash nightclub, and that could be a noise factor, or it would depend on how late the restaurant must open. A place is serving breakfast and maybe some pizza. The early evening hours is different, so I'm just having a problem with, we really don't know what kind of a restaurant we're dealing with here.
They would, I guess, have to follow whatever the code says relative to the establishment. If there's limitations in your code for hours, noise, lighting, a whole host of things, they would have to comply with code, and that would, I guess, also be gone through during the planning board process.
Another question that might be helpful is, what was the, do you know what the current, what the operating hours were of the previous restaurant?
I believe he operated as a pizzeria, but that's...
Don't know how late.
No. But I remember...
So...
He used to close around 10 o'clock.
Oh, okay. So, you know. Okay. Yeah. You know, had he, had he sold another slice, I think, you know, he would have grandfathered in probably and may have mooted that out, but you know better than myself.
I think it's probably important to note that it really is a very lightly occupied area. You're not in the middle of a village where there are houses that abut it. I mean, across the street, there's really nothing. I mean, just this large industrial complex. I'm not even sure if it's in operation. The next building is about 50 feet away. A small house on either side. So, beyond those two houses, I don't think it impinges on anybody.
I would have to disagree with you once my turn.
Well, just wait, Art.
Okay.
Carmen, continue.
I just had one question about the, if you're facing the proposed restaurant, the building on the right, up and back, is that a private residence, or?
That's not...
I believe, I believe it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
You think it is?
I believe it is, yeah. It's a, it's a small wood-framed building.
No, no. The one on the right. It's not that small.
Yeah.
It's up and back a little.
I've done some more...
Two stories.
Research on that through parcel access, and it's a three-family rental that's now in foreclosure, and it's owned by a mortgage corporation.
Well, thank you. Okay. Okay. No further questions.
Paul?
Thanks. If you can answer this question, there's a realtor sign in the front of the property. Do you know how long it's been on the market?
Over a year.
Do you know how it was marketed?
Rand Realty.
No. How, was it marketed as a restaurant? Was it marketed just as a...
It was marketed...
Well, he's not, he hasn't been sworn in yet.
It was, it was, you want, you want to, you could swear him in, and he'll, he's the better one to ask than me.
Yeah. If you can, if there's anything you can add to this, please join, join the comments.
Your real estate agent was the mother of it.
You have to state your name, and then we have to spray you in.
And if you...
Mike Hartwick.
Speak into the microphone, please.
That was Greater Hudson Ben.
Okay. Mr. Hartwick, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York. Now you're ready to go.
Okay. Yeah, the agent is the mother of the borrower, and she's been trying to market the building for, I think it's about 18 months. What's the resistance that she ran into was not having a use variance. And her son was encouraged to keep it open, just to sell something, to keep that use variance in effect, but he didn't do it, and lost the use variance. The building's going to be very difficult to sell without the use variance.
If I understand your answer, then it was only marketed as a restaurant?
It was, she marketed it as a restaurant.
Okay. But no other uses?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
And I've talked to her numerous times, and feel like I know her.
That's all I have, then.
Any other questions?
Okay. Larry?
Art?
I do. First of all, you stated that there are no, not many homes around that. Did you look behind the restaurant? There's an entire row of homes. There's a whole street. I mean, that's a very highly populated area, so...
Behind the restaurant?
All around. If you took a ride around the block, you'd find that it's a very, very highly inhabited area. You know, the Fairview area is extremely high housing count. So, I'd have to disagree with your remark on that in total. In your application, your A1, where it says, the restaurant has been in existence in the neighborhood for more than 60 years. The pizza place was only there for about four years. This has been an ongoing restaurant use for many years. It was a restaurant, it was a bar, it was a restaurant, it was a pizza joint. So, this restaurant has not been there for 50 years, or 60 years. It was only there for a few years.
How long was the, if I may ask, how long was it used on and off as some type of eating establishment?
I've lived there 40 years. When we moved in, there was a little restaurant, four chats mainly. It closed 35 years ago. It was empty for years, for a couple of years, and it's bounced back and forth. The lapse now has been, I'd say that they've been out of there more than 18 months. They've probably been out of there closer to four years, would I guess, as a resident of the area. So, it's well beyond the 18-month period that has been noted here. What else do we have? I have to agree with Jim. A variance to an unknown establishment raises a real concern as a, as a neighbor and as a zoning member. I think we're kind of doing the old pick and the poke thing here. We'd give you unlimited privileges, a bar or something like that, and do you know if they were planning on a bar?
They were not. The buyer was not. We were told by the planning officials who we met with that that was something they didn't want to see.
Okay.
And the buyer at that meeting had indicated he had no plans to run it as a bar.
But...
So, I would, I would just say that the variance you give could have that restriction. And again, it has to go through the planning board process, so there'd be some limitations in terms of what...
And I don't know, counsel, can we say there could be no bar?
Well, I think what I'm looking at now is how the code defines restaurant versus bar, and I'm sure you could put a limitation on it to be a certain type of restaurant use, yes.
Because, you know, the fear there, and again, a longtime resident of the area, I've seen a lot of things happen in that particular establishment. We are highly, highly occupied with college students of various colleges in that area. And again, noise, or a noise concern came up on the other side of the table here. That can be a hangout, that big lot. It's kind of, it can be kind of hidden, because it is off the road a little bit, behind it. You know, and I can, I can see it turn into a horror story if we just give you carte blanche, if you will, with the various residents of the town now versus what it used to be with all locals.
We were, we were told that when we met with the town, the planning people, and they said, you know, they thought the perspective of the town as an entity would be, A, not to see a bar there, the very reason you talked about, B, not to have it again be some type of student housing as residential. They thought that some type of eating establishment, again, what he was proposing was, we'll call it, during working hours, nothing too late. And, you know, whether the code, I don't know, would restrict the use of a bar, or we could agree to that.
Yeah. Restaurant, the definition of restaurant includes possibility selling alcohol or not.
Yes.
You certainly could put that limitation on it if you felt, because you were giving a use variance, that's a reasonable use, given that it's in a residential neighborhood. I mean, that's a reasonable limitation related to it.
It is.
The code specifically says that the zoning board can impose any conditions needed to guarantee, to make sure that this is compatible with the, with the area.
Right. And the other thing is, when I looked at the use variances, not only does it expire one year from you grant it, it, let's say somebody else buys it, they run a business for two years, they abandon it for over a year, it expires as well, which, so that means that it's, you know, it won't stay in perpetuity unless it's continued to operate as a business in perpetuity.
You know, I go back to, part of my, and I think, I don't know if Carmen brought it up or not, but if we grant an unknown variance...
Well, you do have...
What can we do afterwards if we decide this is not a use we want? Do we have to wait the two years, or wait for them to...
Well, I mean, the thing is that it, I mean, how the use will get established and what will happen will basically essentially be, you know, established by the planning board with respect to site plan, and they can, hours of operation and signage and all that kind of good stuff. The other thing that you all need to be focusing on is the economic viability of this property being sold, whether just for a lot, a lot to knock a house down and build a house on it. I mean, it was presented, I mean, in, I believe it was in the application and not in the staff review, as selling it for, not for somebody to live in it residentially, but selling it in, as an income property. And so, that's just something you need to consider in whether, you need to consider the fiscal viability. I mean, that's the question for a use variance, whether, you know, it can be fiscally viable to be sold in this neighborhood. Now, we also have the interesting questions of the economic downturn and mortgages and all that, but...
I have a question. I don't believe it's part of the requirement that we determine the future economic viability. I mean, that's, that's a risk that the buyer takes. I think...
You basic, I mean, no, I think it is, that you, that it cannot be used, that it cannot be used under any, any use allowed.
Right. But the applicant bears the burden of that.
But that's not, but suppose that we grant a use variance, our, our decision to do that is, is independent of what we may think the economic success of the proposed use would be?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, you need to consider whether, in fact...
Use of, or the current code?
Right.
Okay. We're, we're in agreement. We're in agreement.
Does everybody else know what we just said?
Yes.
We just, one of these... We just, one of these, okay.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, we, we submitted, uh, for the record, we submitted something relative to that.
Yes. Okay, okay.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's nothing to do with you folks, but if the bank owns this property, and I think they're going to, it needs a lot of work. I mean, we've got mattresses piled behind the building. We've got dumpsters that haven't been emptied in who knows how many years. I don't think that would hurt the area if we could get somebody to take care of that. Because the building's in pretty poor repair right now.
Related to that, the banks, um, you know, as part of moving forward on the prior transaction, they actually paid, uh, paid the taxes. You know, so I think they're, I think they're trying to be, uh, good fiscal neighbors. We understand the speculative nature and the reasonableness of your questions. These were things that were outlined to us when we previously met with the town, uh, the officials and planning. We don't have a crystal ball. I could only say that whatever, you know, we believe we've met our burden to get the variance. We believe that the request makes sense from the town's perspective. Someone goes in there, they're gonna have to comply with what the planning board wants when they go through site plan process. So we think there's a lot of checks and balances, um, regarding the issues you've raised. And, and we believe we've met our burden in terms of showing, um, the, the hardship if we were to use this as a residential, um, facility.
May I address the issue that Mr. Grace raised? I have a question. I'm not sure you have to swear in, but I do. The, uh, you've mentioned that in the past, there have been some things that went on there that were less than desirable. I would ask you, was, was most of that associated with the use of alcohol? Actually, you don't have to answer, but the point I'm making is that if you can grant a use variance, which prohibits the use of alcohol, but in so doing, you allow for restaurants or eating facility, then it becomes more tractable to sell and it's more likely that something will be done, including cleaning up the mattresses. See, I, look, I lived in Upps, which is a college town, and I know exactly what you were talking about. So if, if there is a way where you can grant that variance, but exclude the use, the sale of alcohol within that facility, then I think you, I think so would win for everybody in those circumstances.
Can I answer, can I answer that?
Certainly.
The first part of your, your question is yes, alcohol was a very big factor in some of the thing. I think if you back and look through the police records, go back a number of years, you'll find out what I'm referring to. Once the alcohol subsided, the use of alcohol, it was just a pizzeria, if you will, it was much easier to have control by the town police if need be.
Yeah.
Because you didn't have the, the issue of, you know, of alcohol. I think the neighborhood in my, you know, I, I shouldn't answer, but it was alcohol related, yes, alcohol related, there's no doubt.
Okay, you ready?
Oh, yes. Um, I'm having a hard time keeping track of all the players, so if we could just, like, go through that. Mr. Hartwick is from the bank.
Yes.
Is, uh, does the bank own it yet or no?
Bank does not own it.
Does not own it yet, but.
It's held, it's held as collateral.
Okay.
But the, the borrower has agreed to give us a deed in lieu verbally.
Okay.
And we're working on it.
And who, well, who was Steven Jansik?
Steven, he was, he's a borrower.
He's the bar, the, the person that was going to buy or the person that owes the bank?
Yes, owes the bank.
Okay.
Okay, and is looking to sell it.
Right. Okay, and then, um, Dawson is a broker and Mr. Hurwitz is the architect. You're Mr. Hurwitz and you're the architect. Going through, going through this application, the first thing we, I would guess that the rest of us were looking for was one of the biggest parts of the test that you have to pass to grant a use variance is that the applicant has to show that there is no reasonable rate of return for any other use that is allowed in that zone. And the only thing that you gave us was a residential house, which even that, in my opinion, is questionable. So I say, you know, you maybe could have sold that property as a daycare. Or, um, you know, as a, a club, a country club, or a playground or something. There, there's nothing in the application that tells me that that's, that you tried to use that for every use that is allowed in that zone.
Well, we didn't, we definitely didn't talk about country clubs.
Well, no, but I'm, but I'm saying that's a use, I mean, you, there are uses here that you could have probably used, maybe a daycare center, fraternal club, maybe, um, a nursery school. To me, that would be a great little spot for a nursery school.
We, um, we went on the broker's, um, analysis of them, they're trying to market the property for eight, you know, over a year. We did submit, um, something from Mr. Hurwitz and from the broker, uh, who went through an economic analysis. You know, we did not do one based on a daycare center. I, I would submit to you that if someone wanted to open up a daycare center over the last twenty-four months, they probably would have knocked on the door. You know, I think she marketed it, you know, commercially. Yes, her focus.
Well, that was a question. I, I think.
Her focus was as a restaurant, because that's what it previously was. But I think, you know, she, she took a, she tried to take a, my understanding is a broader view as a commercial listing. I don't have the full details of what she did over eighteen months. But, um, we thought the highest and best use would be what it was, although the gentleman is mentioning that it's been difficult to keep it open as a restaurant. And, you know, hopefully with the right buyer, there's someone who could operate it successfully, um, given the need in the area. So that was the submission that we made to you and we hope it met our burden.
You, you understand that for us, it doesn't matter what we think. It matters whether or not the application passes the test.
I, I agree, and I would hope that in your analyzing those aspects of the test, your discretion is exercised in a way that you would conclude that what we're asking for could potentially benefit the town. And if you conclude that it won't benefit the town to try to sell the building and, and have someone open a restaurant there that would then have the controls of the planning board and site plan review, then, that maybe you conclude the opposite, so.
The other, the other question that I have is for number two, that, um, you stated that the hardship was caused by the economic downturn, et cetera, et cetera, and that's what made them close the restaurant to begin with. And again, I can't find it to, in me to use that as, um, the hardship because that hardship was all of Kipsey, all of the US. I mean, we all suffered a downturn. So that, to me, does not make this parcel unique for that reason. I mean, does that make sense, counsel?
I'll have to think about that for a second.
Well, it's not unique, but a lot of people suffered and had hardships.
Well, that's true, but you see that the test says, and interesting enough, Willie went to a class like a month ago on this very thing. And it says that, that, that it cannot relate to the person themselves, that it has to relate to the land. But the uniqueness of the hardship has to be related to that parcel.
In that neighborhood.
In that neighborhood. And not to any other thing around it. And to me, since the entire town was in a, uh, economic downturn, the whole country was in an economic downturn. So to me, that does not make that parcel unique. Now, is there something that you can add to that?
There were restaurants that didn't close in your town, and I would say that the economic downturn didn't affect that. And I'm sure that there was some restaurants that opened in your town. So I would say that the economic downturn didn't affect those restaurants. So again, um, and I understand your point, ma'am. But I would say that you're, you are able to look through some of these factors and issues with discretion to view the application in such a way.
We're not, we're not picking you up well at all.
Yeah, that's okay.
You can take it off, yeah.
Then I'll start doing karaoke. So, I, I, again, I would just emphasize about the discretionary aspects, um, your point's well taken.
I think.
I'm sorry. Well, if you grant a use variance, it's not, I'm not sure I understand this correctly. In granting a use variant, you're not granting it restricted only to the use of a restaurant. So in point to fact, if one chooses to run a daycare center or, or, or shop that sells habidashery or some other function.
Doesn't preclude us.
It doesn't preclude you from doing that, so.
From buying a binder, a buyer of that.
But to grant a use variance, we have to, at least as one vote, vote, I have to feel comfortable that you have already tried to sell it, to sell hats or whatever, the daycare, whatever else, whatever use is allowed in that zone. And, and that's what the law says we have to look at.
I, I apologize, the, the broker's not here and, and so I, I could only speculate, but my guess is they knew what the uses that were allowed, uh, since, you know, in the zone, and no one really knocked on their door to, uh, to buy that building, knowing what those uses were. So.
Can I just say that that property was originally appraised at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And we had offers as low as fifty thousand dollars without the use variance. That, that property was very much impacted to a high degree by the recession.
And what was the buyer willing to pay if it had the use variance?
They, they didn't want to talk about that. They wanted to get the use variance themselves. That, that's not the buyer that we had. That, that was, that was an offer. I think there were about, there were two or three offers on a building that were just ridiculously low prices.
I think one thing to, just to go back to your question about the uniqueness would be in this neighborhood or district, so we were not looking at all of the Kipsey. You're looking at, you're really looking at this district. And it is, I mean, and potentially the uniqueness of the property is having run as a business, not as a home. I mean, the other piece, you know, I'm still looking at here from the legal perspective is, you know, looking at it. I mean, even this comparison here is talking about it as an in, and Paul, Paul, feel free to weigh in over there.
Only talked about.
As an income property
Right.
versus as
Only talked about it.
and whether it could be converted to a home or knocked down and made into a home that, and how do you measure the economic viability of that? And I don't offhand know the answer, and I don't know if there are any cases on it, but I certainly, if you adjourn it, could see what I could find out for you.
I, I want to come back to that.
I'm done for now.
Okay, Christine?
I think everybody's covered a lot, so no questions.
Okay. All right, I'm, I want to, I want to come back to some of the requirements because Ms. Baum has suggested use variances are, uh, the most restricted. We are, we are bound by the code to show that, um, the granting of use variances meets, meets some pretty specific tests. And, and I think we've, we've talked about some of them. I want to come back to, to the, to the question, the economic hardship. And, um, the, the code talks about a reasonable rate of return. And that, that, uh, that's one that, that, uh, use variance should be granted if the property, under its present zoning, is incapable of producing a reasonable rate of return. So, so I wanted, I wanted to test that. And in, in order to determine a reasonable rate of return, we first have to determine something like what its value is or what the investment is. And I looked at a number of things. I went to the real estate listings, um, where it's, it's, it's currently listed at just short of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I went to parcel access where the two parcels together are assessed at about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In the, um, application, um, there's a suggestion that there was a purchase price of ninety-five thousand dollars. So, 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 so the value here is just like all over the place. So i- in, in terms of calculating what's a reasonable rate of return, what number do I use?
Well, we, um, we submitted to you, um, the letter of the broker. And to convert the income property to a single-family residence, the rental income would only be about fourteen hundred dollars per month based on nearby rentals. I'm reading from her May twentieth.
Yes.
However, the conversion cost to renovate the building into a single-family residence would cost between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars, plus the purchase price of ninety.
Plus the, plus the purchase price of ninety-five thousand dollars. We thought that that would support, um, the conclusion that, um, the fourteen hundred dollars per month after you add all the, the renovation cost as well as the, uh, purchase price, in terms of that rate of return versus the, um, if it ran as a successful, you know, restaurant.
Okay.
And obviously, that's, that's the assumption we're making, given the lack of ability to market it and sell it without the use variance from potential buyers.
Okay, so the conversion cost of ninety thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, this would convert it to a legal residential use allowable under the code. Okay, you could go and do that. You'd need a building permit, but certainly nothing from CBA, nothing from planning, nothing from nobody else. Okay, right? Okay, where, where did the ninety to a hundred thousand dollars number come from?
That was submitted by Ms. Dawson. She, she came up with that estimate based on what, um, I guess she felt it needed as a broker who has been trying to market it.
See, it's boring.
But, but I, but I notice in, in your letter, Mr. Horwitz, you didn't give any financial estimates.
No, no.
Okay, all right, so, so ninety to a hundred thousand dollars is kind of a guesstimate here. Okay. And then the purchase price of ninety-five thousand dollars. So I, so I did a little calculating. If you look at the fourteen hundred dollars, uh, which is the estimated monthly rental based, we're told, on comparable, uh, dwellings in the neighborhood, that comes out to a little short of seventeen thousand dollars a year. If we say that the investment in the property is, say, two hundred thousand dollars, the ninety-five thousand dollars and the hundred thousand dollars that would be required to convert it, plus five thousand dollars for, you know, you know, miscellaneous. Two hundred thousand dollars, you divide that out, that's eight point four percent of return on the investment.
Pre, um, cost of running the building.
Okay.
Insurance.
Insurance and all those other things.
Okay, but we've got none of that.
We're not, we're not.
All I would, all I would point out is that based on the numbers that you have given us, the rate of return would be eight point four percent, which is about twice the mortgage rates. My bank account pays point one percent. Eight percent sounds pretty damn good.
We would, um, I would just say that your, your math needs, would need to be adjusted based on the fuel costs, insurance. Those things would probably, you know, my understanding, that would cut the margin probably in fifty percent. But we're not claiming zero return as a residential property. We're not, we're not claiming that.
Okay, but my point is that what, um, what is required is that you need to demonstrate that you cannot get a reasonable rate of return. Okay, so you've got to, you've, you've got to show why I'm wrong.
I, we, we submitted, we, it's not a question of you being, you know. It's not, it's not a question of you being wrong. It's a question of that, what, what I'm saying is that part of your math should, um, consider the other costs of running a, a, a rental facility in terms of insurance.
Okay, and my point is that the burden is on you to provide those numbers.
In dollars and cents, you, what you should have done possibly is to, for instance, what it would take to bring that house up to a residential home up to code, it should have been, this is an estimate I got from a contractor. This is what it will cost. That's the kind of information that we need to have in order for you to pass this test. We're trying hard to tell you what you need to do, because right now, for me, it doesn't pass.
Right, and, and I can appreciate that, and I, again, we would think that our position is what we submitted shows a certain level of return. In your judgment, it's eight percent. I'm telling you that your math doesn't include other costs, which I'm now stating on the record. And it's, it's, it would be fairly obvious that anyone running a residential property would have other costs that would cut into that particular math. And again, you exercising your discretion.
I quite agree, because, and I'm kind of surprised, we didn't, you didn't even give us the tax records. I mean, the, the taxes is. I mean, the taxes is just paid, you know, that obviously has got to be factored in here, but.
Well, I thought we did state on the rec, I thought we did state on the record the taxes. But I, listen, I think it really, I think it really boils down to, are you comfortable seeing that this establishment is run as a restaurant again, giving a variance, to allow the bank who's going to take title, to try to sell it as that? And we are not denying at all that the application, you know, that there's going to be some rate of return on all of this, in its current state. And maybe the bank, when they take title, will sell it as some type of residential property, which is allowed in the zone, and there'll be student housing there, or whatever else. I mean, that, that, if the variance is denied, that may be their only option. And, and again, we specifically set up a meeting with, when we started this process, Sarah Davis, Neil Wilson, and Eric Holman, to kind of go through what the town was interested in. And we got the feeling from, from those individuals that they would like to see it as a restaurant, not as a bar, and not as a student housing facility.
With all due consideration, sir, none of those gentlemen votes on the ZPA.
No, I understand that. We took, we took all that into consideration, in terms of our trying to assess what, what the town would view as potentially a friendly project. And, and that was based also on the fact that the bank hasn't had anyone biting at the property for a daycare center, they didn't go the route of a residential facility, and it was our understanding that the town didn't really want to see another residential facility. But that may be their choice, I, you know.
This, this drifts away into, into issues that really are beyond the purview of the ZPA. We, we have a set of very specific criteria. Now, I think from the questions that you've heard, and I think the tenor, nobody wants to see a vacant building just rotting away. And there may be ways in which your application can meet the criteria for a use variance, probably subject to a number of conditions, hours of operation, not having a beer or liquor license, probably some restriction, no fast food, no drive-throughs, that kind of thing. But there are also possibilities that a use variance could be granted for other uses, that may or may not have been considered. Small retail, a deli, beauty shops, barber shops. I mean, there are a whole range, bank, small bank branch, a whole range of things, for which a use variance would, would be appropriate, beyond simply a restaurant. So, you know, it seems to me that there's, there's a, there's a wide area to, to work here, but we're just going to need, need some more.
And, and again, our application was geared, we had a specific buyer with a specific plan, and that was altered last week. We wanted to continue to move forward, so your questions and input are helpful, and, you know, we could potentially make additional submissions, as the board may see fit, to either answer questions, or further refine the application. The goal here is to allow the bank to be able to sell the property, once they take title, and make a better use in the neighborhood of it. So we're, we're happy to, at the board's pleasure, assist in whatever additional materials we could provide.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do.
Yeah.
I think, I think, personally, I think I have to ask this question, based on what this, just transpired here. If, in legal, I don't know, if this was turned into a residential establishment, would that parking lot have to be torn up? Because you have 100% impervious coverage. Is that, in fairness to everybody, is that something we, they should be looking at, as far as additional costs, to present their case properly? And I know I'm playing devil's advocate here, but you can only cover so much land.
Right, I don't know the answer, offhand, I mean, that would be.
Well, we haven't even begun to look at, I mean, it would depend on the design, and I don't know, I'm sure there's probably going to be some variances it would require for.
But yeah, in fairness to everybody, I mean, is that.
Probably for, perhaps for impervious service, it depends on what they want to do. It's, it's two lots of record at the moment.
Right.
They could put up another, another building.
That's true.
Yeah.
He had, the buyer had planned to use that lot as parking.
Yeah.
You know, redo, redo the existing, and then use that lot as parking. And we thought that would be attractive, you know, for the customers to be able to get in and out.
I think his point was in trying to help you, in that that would add to the costs of conversion, and make it less, potentially less viable. I think, I mean, what Mr. Chalice.
I'm just trying to be fair to everyone.
No, and I think that's good.
No, thank you.
That's important, but I just, I don't know if it was taken that way.
No, thank you. And I do have another, one more question, and I'll shut up. The area that this restaurant is, the Fairview area, based on the lack of financial success in that area, do we look at the entire Fairview area, for example? Because there are other restaurants that did not make it. Versus the entire Poughkeepsie area? Do we look at Fairview as an area, or we only look at two or three blocks of Fairview?
That's a little dicey, I mean, I think, I don't think you're looking at the whole city, I think you're looking at the neighborhood.
That neighborhood, which.
And I, and I don't think you're necessarily looking, I don't know, the whole economic downturn argument, to me, isn't necessarily, I mean, it plays into it to some extent, but what more plays into is the fact that this particular location is fitted as a restaurant, has been a restaurant on and off for many, many years. I mean, that, to me, almost is more, in my mind, making a legal analysis of whether it fits the criteria, is more relevant than the fact that, the reason that it closed. I guess, and, you know, when, you know, looking at a bank trying to market it, and, or a real estate agent trying to market it.
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this? Okay, hearing done. I think, based on the questions, I think, your suggestion that you might want to come back with an amended, with some fuller economic detail that would show us about rates of return, under, under various uses. I think, so, I mean, to my mind, right now, this application just doesn't meet the criteria. I would have a hard time supporting it. On the other hand, as I suggested, I'm not, I'm not averse to a use variance, if it can be shown that it's needed, and if we can put some kinds of, you know, reasonable conditions on it, that will guarantee that it be an asset to the neighborhood, and not a problem. And along that line, I must say, there, in the application, a number of people made what I consider speculative and facile comments about how the previous establishment had been in harmony with the, the neighborhood, without ever generating any complaints. For several years, I served on the City of Poughkeepsie Common Council, and also on the Town of Poughkeepsie Town Board, and I got lots of complaints about neighborhood restaurants and pizzerias, noise, traffic, smells, litter, and so on. So I think it's completely reasonable for us to, to suggest certain kinds of conditions that will, that will at least minimize any, any disruption to the, what is an existing residential neighborhood. So, my feeling is that we should adjourn this to the next time, I don't, as, what is the feeling of the board?
I would oppose that. I don't think that they're going to be able, the testimony you heard today was that it was marketed solely as a restaurant. I don't know where they're going to produce any additional evidence at this late date. And more importantly, the applicant is not the one looking for the use variance. A future owner of the, of the property is looking for the use variance. And I think it's inappropriate for us to vote at this time, under these conditions.
It just doesn't pass the test. I mean, we're trying to give the applicant the opportunity to make it right, and they seem to be of the opinion that we can just, you know, say yes or no, according to how we feel, and it just doesn't work that way. You definitely have to meet all the criteria, and if you don't, then we are obligated to deny it. So we're trying to give you the opportunity to make it correct.
No, we, we appreciate that, and obviously, when the buyer pulled out last week, that, that changed the chemistry, the calculus. We do still have the owner's proxy, that wasn't revoked. And specifically, for the purpose of coming here tonight, the owner wanted us to seek that, knowing that they're going to be giving title to the bank, and that this makes the bank in a better position to, to sell the property, market it. So I, you know, obviously, you have to follow your, as you feel, or as you're analyzing this.
Oh, it's not the way we feel, that's what I've been trying to tell you.
As you're, as you're analyzing the application, we will, I have to, you know, really talk to the bank and see how they want to proceed. I, I, you know, I, it, it may be simpler for them, once they take title, just to knock the building down and market, market the vacant land. I, I, it's, it's, you know, once the buyer pulled out, it not only affected the focus of the application, as we've discussed, but now, because of the broadness, I'll acknowledge, it, it kind of complicates not only your decision, but the bank's decision. So we were, we were hoping that the concept of the restaurant was one that met the burden, met the test, was something friendly to the town, would allow then the bank to try to market the property, as I've been saying, and.
Well, personally, with or without a buyer, it doesn't change the analysis, so.
So I would make a motion that we adjourn this to July 14th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I, I'm inclined to give them the benefit of the doubt. Clearly, things have happened, perhaps are going to be happening in the next couple of weeks. I don't think it changes anything for us to leave this open. I understand Paul's point, maybe nothing will change, but.
Right, yeah.
If, if it doesn't change, then we're right back here, and I don't, I don't think anything vital is hanging.
I don't think so, this is really a catch-22 situation, because, you know, because of what has happened with the potential buyer.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm just not sure, I like the term, that you're going to refine the application. I'm not sure what refinement will do.
Well, let's give them a chance.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions?
Okay, so on the motion to adjourn this application to July 14th, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six to one, okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, item four, Robert Olker, 31 Swenson Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself on this.
Oh, okay, Christine? Or just.
You're going to replace me?
Phyllis?
You're going to replace me with Phyllis?
You mean, you said Christine, you meant.
Oh, I mean, Phyllis, I'm close, I did this last month, too, I'm sorry. Okay, just by way of explanation, Christine Sorcelli is a regular member of the zoning board, sitting there. Phyllis Howard is an alternate, who is now filling in for the recused hallway, okay. Just a senior moment, okay, what can I? Okay, is it good to state your name?
Robert Olker.
Mr. Olker, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury, pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay.
Okay, so just briefly describe what you're planning to do?
Yes, the new pool, it wouldn't really fit anywhere in the yard, meeting your 15-feet requirement. So the variance needs to be done. As the site planner, you could see where I want to put the pool, for safety reasons, that I could see everyone in it at any time. The fence, we've been there 30 years, and there was a metal fence when we moved in, which corroded, of course, and we replaced it with stockade. The stockade fence is six feet high, not seven, by eight feet long. The shed, the shed was 10 by 10, I think it was about 20 years ago, I changed it to a 10 by 18, because I needed more storage, bicycles, motorcycles, and other things. Only to find out that it's in my front yard, after 30 years, not knowing that on a corner lot, your front yard is the whole property. So they are suggesting I get a variance for that thing.
Okay, Christine, any questions?
No, I saw the property, I don't have any questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Okay, how long has, has that stockade fence been there?
That one?
Yeah.
Well, it was, that's the second set of stockade fence. The first one was that really cheap spruce stuff I put up 29 years ago. That rotted, and then we replaced it with that dog ear, which was, I think, pressure-treated now. That's been up 10 years, at least, I think.
Okay, 10 years, all right. And the shed has been there.
The 10 by 18 has been there since '35, 20 years.
20 years, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Larry?
No questions right now.
Okay, Phyllis?
And you're not replacing the fence that's there, you're just looking to bring it into, or are you going to replace it?
No, it's just going to stay, just the way it is.
The way it is.
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
No questions.
Okay.
It's on a corner.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that, as you said, you've got a corner lot, so you've got, quote, "two front yards."
Yeah.
The, the front of the house is actually on Swenson.
Yes.
Just, if I remember driving along, what is it, East?
Yes.
East Street?
Yes, East Drive.
Are there any houses that face onto East Street?
They, the one across the street faces East, and the one next to us, I can't think of his name, oh, Marie Gardner, their house is faced East, but their address is not East Drive. Their address is Swenson.
Okay, okay, that's what I, that's what I.
Yep, then nobody really lives on East Drive. Isn't that strange?
Right, and I actually had to go to the, to the, you know, the Google Earth to look at it, and.
Yeah, it's really weird.
It's a street that nobody lives on, okay? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this application? Okay, no other questions from the, from the board? All right, is there a motion to close a public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Five, Jeff and Michelle Hamel, 51 Sharon Drive. Okay, and hallway returns. Yes, tag team's name. Okay, so if each of you would just state your name, and then you can all be sworn in together.
Jeff Hamel.
I'm Michelle Hamel.
And I'm Dan Scharf.
Mr. and Mrs. Hamel, and Mr. Scharf, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury, pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, and so what kind of a variance are you applying for?
Want me to jump in? Yep, so, so these guys are the homeowners, I'm the designer on the project, I put together the plans for you folks. What we're looking for is an area variance, for a pre-existing non-conforming lot. That's basically our hardship, is that we're in a zone that requires, I want to say, 20,000 square feet, and we're coming up at about 12,000 square feet. These folks have lived in the house since, for about 17 years, and they've done improvements on it all the way through, and they put a pool in last year. And everything they've done to date has all been within regulations, and now they really feel that they need to have a deck out there, so they can see into the pool, and be a little bit more in touch with what's happening inside there, it's an above-ground pool. So they want to be able to be there and see the kids inside. So we did a little analysis on how they use their backyard, and they have a pretty well, you know, laid-out setup back there, and they'd like to keep as much open green space as they can, and put this pool on the other side, or put the new deck on the other side of the pool, where there's a pretty good. side of the pool, where there's a pretty good-sized fence that goes across the property there anyway.
Okay, good. And thank you for submitting such clear drawings.
No, I don't have any questions.
Betty?
No, I have no questions.
All right.
Only in reference to a staff recommendation about landscaping, et cetera. Would there be room? I mean, that deck can be pretty high. I don't know what you'd do about landscaping. Have you given any thought to that, to try to close that off from your neighbor on the right side looking at the house?
The backside of the fence that's looking at our neighbor's house will be fencing as opposed to open.
On the deck itself?
On the deck itself. It'll be closed.
It's going to be a closed, oh.
And then between there and the fence, there's going to be a strip of grass just to get the tractor through there, the lawnmower, and just do maintenance inside there.
Freeze there, too.
Yeah, it's about five feet.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
So, this is the four-foot privacy fence that you're talking about that will be along the edge of the deck?
That's right, along that 20-foot length.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Larry? Paul?
Did you find your property marker?
It's back there somewhere. I think I covered it when I was planting grass back there earlier this year.
So, so that I'm, the top of the privacy fence will be about eight feet from the ground?
Yeah, let's see, the deck, I'm going up 48 inches and then plus four feet, I'd say eight foot is a good estimate.
And what's the length of that fence along that border?
20 foot.
Will that continue past where the chain link fence starts?
Yeah, the stockade fence transitions to chain link at some point over there. It's probably very close to the back of the deck, the proposed deck. Do you agree? As this fence comes down, it's stockade and it changes to chain link?
Yeah, and that fence isn't our fence.
Right.
Changes like about there.
Okay, so Jeff's indicating that maybe the existing stockade fence transitions to the chain link fence about two feet before the end of the proposed deck. So, it covers 18 foot, is hitting the stockade, and then two feet is chain link.
And what will the material be for the privacy part of the?
The privacy portion will be framed with pressure-treated, and then it'll probably have, whether, once we get the budgets together, it could be pressure-treated material, or it could be fiber composite material.
You have a color in mind? Say again? Do you have a color in mind?
Color in mind? I haven't even discussed it. Natural?
Some kind of natural stain, probably.
That's all I have.
Carmen?
I have no questions. It's a very attractive backyard.
Thank you. We enjoy it.
Yes, very nice.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application for 51 Sharon Drive? Okay, hearing done. Any further questions from the board? Is there a motion to adjourn, or to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, Gusto Restaurant, 15 College View Avenue. Okay, good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name's Ozzy Biker, I'm from Timely Signs of Kingston, Inc., and I represent Gusto Restaurant at 15 College View.
Mr. Biker, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I'll help you out?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, and as I understand from your application, this is simply a matter of locating a freestanding sign back from the right away?
Yes.
Okay. And you've submitted a photograph and a drawing, okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
The sign that's there now, that's just a temporary sign?
Yes.
Is that what the sign will look like? I mean, is that, that's what the sign will be?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. The only comment I have is, on this application, it's a variance to locate a sign 4.532 feet. Do you usually measure things in the thousands of feet?
The architect that did this, the site plan, his computer did that, and it scared me.
Okay, thank you, because this struck me as.
When Neil asked me, I said, well, I said, if you really want, he says, what is it, about four and a half feet? I said, no, I called the architect. He went to his computer and he told me, and I said, okay, he says, put that on there then. I said, okay.
Again, is that how we measure it from the post?
Yeah, I mean, thousands of a foot, you.
It's the front of the post, the leading edge, the front edge of the post, which is closest to the property line. From there to the property line is 4.532 feet, and then there's more room between there and the sidewalk.
Right, so my question is, is that where we measure it from?
And I'm looking, I don't know if I know the answer to that. I don't, I mean, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Let me look.
That's the measurement that they told us they needed.
From the post?
From the planning people. And he was specific about the property line, not the sidewalk, not, he wanted the property.
The number strikes me as compulsive bordering on pathological, but.
Brian, do you know?
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this? Okay, if not, any questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Number seven, Rita's, numbers four through 10 Taft Avenue. Is there anyone here from Rita?
Oh, look.
I just looked down and realized it.
Yes, me, too.
You're already sworn in, so you want to just go ahead and describe?
Tell him the truth.
This application.
This is an existing building, and there are, we are here for the variance on a wall sign and a, there was a wall sign here before, and then there's an existing tenant sign that we're just replacing the panels on, but apparently, when they change the sign ordinance, it's an existing sign, but it's non-conforming now. So, we're trying to clear this up. And then there's an awning involved, which is in a separate procedure for architectural awning approval. That's a separate item that's running concurrent to this.
Okay, that actually answers one of my questions. Okay, and then the second part of this would be to add a panel to the bottom of the freestanding sign that's out front.
It's actually there, the space is there already, we're just refacing it from the old tenant to the, Rita's would be the new. There was a tenant in this space before who had panels exactly in that spot on the sign. So, this is kind of where.
Okay, somehow I gathered from the application or something that this was a new panel.
It's a new, it's a new tenant. The old tenant that was in this particular leased space had his panels on the bottom there in the same position. We're just refacing them.
Okay, okay. Christine, any questions?
No, no questions.
Betty?
No, I have no question, because the awning is going to be, that's going to be addressed by the planning board, is that what you just said?
We have an application into the planner, but I haven't heard any response on it yet, so I assume I have to go there, but, you know, I just put the application in, so I'm not sure what, yes, they are addressing it, whoever does the awning architectural review, I assume it's the planning board.
And there isn't going to be any writing on the awning? I have no questions.
Art?
I have no questions.
Okay, I, here mine. Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
Was there a letter from the county on this one?
No.
Ordinarily, when we look at signs, don't we ask for something that fits within the code and then a rendition of what, we have a rendition of what they want to put up there, although it's kind of hard to really see, but I think I'd like to see something that fits within the code. A picture. Are you able to do that?
Well, in this particular case, a part of the problem here, that this is an existing leased space, the sign that was in there before was actually larger than this, but was allowed by code at the time. This particular wall sign is the, 15 square feet is pretty small for this space, it's very hard to do. The other one, the other question is, I mean, the tenant's sign is existing, that, you know, I have no control over that simply because the owner of the building owns the whole sign, so, you know, it's.
Yeah, so I was just talking about the wall sign. Ordinarily, we like to see something that if the 15-foot square foot that's allowed is really inappropriate, we'd like to be able to see that.
It's, the problem is, it's half this size, and if you just envision that half this size, it's too small to see.
Yeah, so that's what I would like to see. Unless, unless nobody else wants any.
Well, typically, that's what we ask. Typically, we ask the applicant to show us what it looks like for what is allowed by code, so, and then what it is that you think you need to put up there, that way it gives us a better understanding of just how much variance you're going to need, because the onus is on us to grant as little variance as possible.
I understand what both Paul and Betty are saying, however, I think this sign is in proportion to the other signs that are there, and I think that's something to keep in mind as well. And I guess I don't have the objection, ordinarily, I would like to see the three renditions, the small, medium, large, but I think this one proportionally is right.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application for Rita's? If not, any further questions from the board? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Colin O'Brien, 20 Crestwood Boulevard.
Good evening.
Good evening, if you'd just state your name?
Colin O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I'll help you out?
I do.
Be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, as I understand it, you want to rebuild the front porch?
Yeah, my front stoop's falling apart, so we have to.
Okay. And so it's going to be 16 feet from the side lot line. Okay, now that matches the distance of the house from the lot line, correct?
It's identical to the existing structure, it's just, I guess, the house, there was a variance, so we have to.
Okay, so the front porch will come out flush with the side of the house?
It'll actually be in a couple inches, but yeah.
And 24 feet from the front lot line where 30 is required, so you're, it comes out a little bit.
Exactly.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Larry? Paul?
The concrete, the steps are quite clearly fallen down, but are the, right outside the doorway, you're replacing that also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the 24 feet that you measured, is that from the last step, or is that from the coming out the door?
I believe coming out the door.
Okay, so you didn't measure this, you didn't include the steps?
Well, the steps, I believe it was three and a half feet stoop and then four steps, which the builder looked at, I think it was nine inches per foot.
Okay, so my question is, did you count the steps or not in the 24 feet from the?
They did, yes.
Okay, I, my recollection was that the steps.
Six feet?
Right, so you may not need as much or any variance at all.
Addressed in the separate, wasn't it?
On the map, he has 24 feet.
He does, but it looks like he's measuring it from the last step, and my understanding was that we don't count the steps in the setback.
Then how big, how long, how far does the porch come off the house?
Total distance is maybe six feet. It's quite small, actually. It's the same exact structure.
If he's got four steps and nine inches, that's three feet. The steps are three feet.
So, it looks like maybe he only needs a one-foot variance.
Oh, I see what you mean, so that to the top of the porch, it'd be 27. Okay.
Do you have any plans that show that?
I don't.
I need to, to me, it doesn't make much difference.
Well, right, except for we want to grant the minimum necessary, and if he doesn't need all of that, we don't have to grant what he needs.
I mean, we certainly amend this, make it 27. I mean, I don't, it's, do you see what we're?
I'm kind, yeah, I'm kind of new at this. I'm sorry.
In the code, it says that there's this front yard setback. Okay, and this, say, would go to the front of the house. Okay, well, a lot of people just have steps coming down from the front door. And the code says, you don't have to count the steps.
Okay.
All right, so in your case, you're building a little stoop, okay, and then steps. And what we're saying is, you don't have to count the steps part of it, it's just the stoop. Okay, which, if we've done the math right here, the edge of your stoop is 27, yeah, 27 feet from the front lot line, and the code says you need 30 feet. So, you only need a variance for three feet. So, that's what we're going to hit to.
Do we, if the steps aren't off the house and are off a stoop, does that change the math?
My recollection is that that's how we've interpreted it, at least all the time that I've been on that board.
Right.
We don't count the steps, is how I.
Well, he said.
Can I ask for the larger, just in case I'm incorrect? Can I find either the word stairs or steps in the town code right now?
Yeah, yeah, I, well, how does the board feel about this? I mean, we're talking about the difference between 24 feet and 27 feet for a front porch and steps.
Yeah, I'm fine the way it is, just in case.
Well, what if he builds a stoop that comes out and then has four feet steps?
Well, you have to, you would have to hold him to the stoop, if you will, that he's projected, right?
All right, well, if you're going to grant him a six-foot variance, he can do whatever he wants.
Well, I would submit he really can't do anything he wants, because he submitted a drawing as part of this, showing us what he's going to do.
Yeah.
That's not a.
I'm inclined to just leave it at 24 feet and let it go, but the board can vote however it wants.
Is this okay to be recorded this way? I mean, I agree with you, Jim, but is it all right? I'm asking our attorney.
What about per application?
What's that?
And per application?
Yeah, but the, I mean, the application doesn't, the drawing, isn't that?
Detailed.
Detailed. Where does it, does it say somewhere in the town code about the steps? I can't find it right now.
About six, I think six feet are allowed.
What's that?
I think six feet are allowed into the front yard.
But what word did, oh, wait, nineteen results. Hold on a second.
Let's see, two, ten, sixteen, are we on?
Where is it in the code?
Finding it right now.
Um, let's see.
I'm finding the word steps. I'm finding the word, but not in the terms of stairs.
I saw this one.
It's not in the descriptors.
Ah, here we go.
Two, ten, sixteen, E is what's in the agenda.
I just see that. I don't know where it is. What is this the definition of?
It's not in the definition.
No, it is. There's something in the definition that answers the question. But I don't know what it's under the definition. All right, let me see, building group, hold on a second. Okay, the line, the front line of a building is the line of that face of the nearest the front lot line of the lot. This face includes sunflowers and covered porches, whether enclosed or unenclosed, but does not include steps.
Okay.
What we need to know is the distance of the edge of the stoop to the...
Well, I mean, you said there are four steps, and they're nine inches wide. Four to nine is thirty-six inches. That's three feet. Yeah. Four, yeah. Four to nine is thirty-six. So, it's three feet. So, three feet of this, we can ignore because it's not counted towards the distance. So, that would take us to... So, he needs a variance to allow him to locate it twenty-seven feet from the front lot line where thirty is required.
So, he needs a three-foot variance.
Yeah.
Makes me, it just makes me nervous to short him if there's any possibility that our math is wrong as we sit here. I think the easier thing to do is we all, it's pretty clear that this variance is probably going to be granted, whether it's a three-foot variance or a six-foot variance. And you could potentially adjourn it to next month. He doesn't have to come.
No, no, we can't do...
He can submit materials with the correct number.
No, no.
Does that mean that he can't work on his porch until next month? Well, it's at its own risk, but...
It doesn't seem to bother anybody else.
I don't think Sarah's going to run out and cite him.
For a building permit.
I'm sorry, what?
Will he have to go for a building permit?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. And that, and the first thing they're going to ask him is, do you have a variance?
Variance, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
When were you planning on doing it?
Truly, we were going to start five weeks ago, but had to wait.
Wait, I'll say tomorrow.
And my only concern really is that the steps are crumbling. And I already...
We saw it.
Yeah. It's, and it's on top of that, it's a major, I feel, just to myself, an eyesore.
Is the house thirty feet, is the house setback thirty feet, the edge of the house? I just, I just want to make sure you give him enough. I don't really, you know, I don't want you to give him too much, but...
How, just wondering, how does it work when it's a pre-existing structure and I'm just really updating that?
It doesn't matter, unfortunately.
No?
So, the question is, do you know if the house is setback? Like, how wide is the porch again? Or the stoop?
The porch's width is at greatest five, the width, and it off the house, it can't be more than three feet.
It's a death.
It's hard to swing the door open and stand on it.
Yeah, I think it's probably under four feet, the, coming out, so. And you're going to make it the same, or you're going to make it a little deeper?
If I could grab like six inches more, it'd be nice, just so I could stand up there with like a bag of groceries in my hand. But we're not really changing anything drastic. We're just really changing the materials.
I'm okay with the way it read.
I am too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that kind of the consensus?
Does man have a little space for his grocery bag?
Fine. Okay, so we're going to leave it at twenty-four.
Okay.
All right. No comments from the audience? Any further questions from the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
To...
Adjourn?
The public. Close the public.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Can I just ask, Brian, I actually, when can I start to do the work? Just, I don't, I've never done this before, so I don't know.
As soon as we give you approval.
You didn't get approved, they just closed it.
No, I didn't, I wasn't going to start like tonight.
But if we...
If you are approved this evening, then you need to go to the building department. And they will put you on tomorrow. You can go tomorrow, call them up and say, hey, I wish to get a building permit for my porch. Submit plans to them.
Okay.
And then probably within a week, they'll be out there to look at it and give you the blessing. And then I think they may come and look at the actual base of the footings before you... Are you, what are you building? Are you doing, you can do cement again?
No, we're using trek decking and then Unilock as a walkway.
Right, so, okay.
They'll probably need to look at the footings.
Well, I have a builder and everything doing it, so I'll probably just talk to him in the morning.
Send him.
Joe's in, okay. I'll call Joe in the morning.
And...
Thank you.
Yep, good.
I appreciate it. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Okay. This brings us to the end of the agenda. Before we go into the deliberation phase, does anybody want to recess? Charge ahead? Fine, okay. All right. Going back to the top of the agenda, item number one has been adjourned. Item number two, simply gourmet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we do the gentleman that's been waiting?
Okay, let's see. At Swenson Drive? Yeah, okay. So, we'll hop to item number four. Robert Olker, 31 Swenson Drive. There are three variances here. One, to locate a swimming pool, seven feet from a side lot line, nine feet from the rear lot line where fifteen are required in each case. The second variance, to allow an existing accessory structure, a shed, to be located in the front yard. And three, to allow an existing seven-foot, and he, the applicant has said that it's a six-foot fence, to be located in a front yard where three and a half feet is allowed. There's a type-two action, so there's no further environmental, there's nothing from the county. In your packet, you'll find a staff report recommending the approval of the variance for the pool, but suggesting there might be a problem with the shed and the fence. Okay. Comments?
I'm okay with all three.
Okay.
I mean, it's been there twenty-some years.
The shed, it's been there for...
The shed and the fence as well. I mean, it is, it's your typical catch, whatever situation. You've got two front yards.
Yep, and...
No place to put it. There's no other place to put it.
Right.
And the way it's set up right now, he really does have the best possible use of the backyard.
Yeah.
He has a lot going on there. It's a busy backyard, but he has the best use of it.
Right. The staff report suggests that moving the shed and moving the fence would open things out. I went out there again to look at it. Moving everything back, you would still have the same structures there. And that's when I really noticed that nobody much lives on that street.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure what the harm is here, but... Okay, anybody, any further questions?
Jim?
Yes.
Is it worth fixing the staff report to note that it's a six-foot fence and not seven feet?
Yeah, we will have to revise this, well, or either that or simply use this and come up with a new set of findings, which I can, which I can do. The first que, can we do all threes of these once, or should we divide them up?
I think, my position generally is if there's nobody who says that they feel that you need to do them separately because they're going to vote differently on any one, you can do them as one thing.
Okay. Is there any objection to considering these as a package?
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, under the findings, whether an undesirable change will be created in the character of the neighborhood or detriment nearby properties will be created. Okay. As the staff report says, the proposed pool will not lead to any undesirable change. The board finds that a fence located along East Street will not block any views nor interfere with any traffic sightlines. Since there are no houses along East Street, this will have a minimum impact on the neighborhood. And furthermore, a fence along this yard is going to be required for the pool. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, as the staff notes, the pool cannot be easily relocated. With respect to the fence and the shed, the board finds that moving these would provide little benefit to the neighborhood, but at considerable cost to the applicant. Three, whether the proposed area variance is substantial. The variance required for the pool is moderately substantial. The existence of the shed and the fence are substantial. However, they are also consistent with other things found in the neighborhood. Five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the variance. The, it would be very difficult for the applicant to locate the pool in another location. Actually, it would be impossible to locate it in another location without a variance. And the fence, and we note that the fence is six feet, not seven feet, and the shed are both pre-existing and arguably not self-created under the current zoning code. Okay, with those findings, Christine, would you like to make the motion on this one?
Sure. This is number...
Four.
Okay. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance...
Well, the, let's see. Based on the findings as stated by the board.
As amended. Okay. Based on the findings amended.
Well, we're actually not...
Stated by, I mean, it's based on the staff report, so it's just the last sentence that needs to change, right here. Yeah. Adopt the findings stated by Chairman Chally.
Okay.
Okay. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as stated by Chairman Chally. Okay, how's that?
Okay. So, a motion to approve these three variances has been made, and there's a second? There's no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. It's approved.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Okay. So, let's take the two signs.
To answer the question on the Gusto sign, I couldn't find, Paul, in the town code, what the measurement is from. And since he's saying that that's what Neil told him to give him, I'm assuming that's what Sarah uses.
Okay.
You look in E code? I can't find it either there.
I'm on E code, and I couldn't find it.
What, and exactly where you measured this sign from?
Yeah.
Yeah, the freestanding.
The old, the old.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what prohibits, if you measure it that way, I don't know what prohibits the arm coming out eighteen feet.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hmm. Well, I know there are some peculiarities in the code of residential overhangs that are kind of odd. But I don't know about in this case.
Good news is this one doesn't hang out.
Well, yeah, because we've got it measured precisely. Okay. Item number six, Gusto Restaurant, 15 College View Avenue. A variance to allow a freestanding sign to be located 4.532 feet from the highway right-of-way where 10 feet is required. This is an unlisted action. There is a short form environmental assessment attached to this application. So, I move that purpose, for purposes of environmental review of the variance application at 15 College View Avenue, that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA declare itself lead agency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? I further move that, based on the short form EAF submitted by the applicant, that the board finds that the proposed action at 15 College View Avenue will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? On the variance itself, you'll find a staff report recommending that this be approved. Any comments, discussion? Okay, Betty, you want to do the motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony by the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this, I ask that the board use the findings as in C. 1 through 5 of the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's no further discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number six is approved. Item number seven, Rita's, 4 to 10 Taft Avenue. And without objection from the board, we will consider the two portions of this as one, a variance to allow a wall sign of 33.1 square feet where 15 feet is permitted. And two, an additional tenant sign of 16 square feet on a freestanding sign that already exceeds the maximum size. This is a type-two action, and so there's no further environmental procedure that we need to follow. The county has said this a matter of local concern. In your staff report, which you received tonight, you'll find an analysis of signs in the vicinity and a recommendation that the variances be granted. Comments? If not, Art, you want to make the motion on this one?
Do the EAF first?
No, it's a type-two action.
Which one?
No, it's an unlisted.
No, it's, you're doing Rita's.
Unlisted. Who's them?
It's unlisted.
Whoop, whoop, whoop. Well, it's an unlisted action. All right, you are. How did I get that? I don't know. There are getting to be more and more senior moments here. This is scary. Okay.
Nine o'clock on a seven-item agenda, that might have something to do with it.
Okay. All right. I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of the environmental review of the application at 4-10 Taft Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I further move that, based on the short form environmental assessment form submitted as part of the application, that the ZBA finds that the action proposed at 4-10 Taft Avenue will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? Okay, now we go to the... So, if there is no further discussion, Art, do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members in the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts, as findings, the determinations found in items 1 through 5 of the staff report.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusal? Okay. The variances are approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night. Good night.
You too, good night.
Now, returning back, so that brings us to item two, Simply Gourmet.
Could I ask a question on this one before you start?
Yeah.
The gentleman said something about two signs being allowed, the second one would have to be on the side of the building, and then I'm looking, is it, is the second, is the fact that it's a second wall sign because this other one that's not related to Simply Gourmet is on the building? I'm just trying to-
They're the same tenant, it's the same-
Same.
One is the catering business and one is the bistro.
I just want to make sure that we're wording what the variance is for accurately. So is it accurately to allow installation of a second front wall sign?
Yes.
Where only one sign per tenant is permitted?
Right.
Okay.
Except-
You're allowing two front wall signs, that's how it's, it's fine.
Yeah, except that if you go out there-
There's more than-
There are two other tenants.
And they both have-
They each have two signs.
All signs.
So in a sense, this, this-
It's weird because it's a different business name.
It's consistent with the precedent, though, of a single tenant having two signs.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was worded correct, that I was understanding.
Umberto.
Yeah, yeah.
Because-
Yeah, okay, all right, now, let me get this right, another unlisted action, okay, and there is an EAF short form here, yes, okay. I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of the environmental review of the action proposed at ten IBM Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA finds that the action proposed at ten IBM Road will have, based on the enclosed environmental assessment form, no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, on the variance itself, any discussion? I think it's smaller than the code and it's consistent with what's out there, and I don't have a problem. Larry, you want to do the motion on this one? Yeah, there's a, yeah, okay, the formula.
Number two?
Uh, yes.
I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts its findings, the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, there's no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousels? All right, item number two is approved. Item number three has been adjourned. Item number four, we have covered. Item number five, Jeff and Michelle Hamel, fifty-one Sharon Drive, a variance to allow a proposed swimming pool deck to be located five feet from the side lot line where fifteen feet is required. This is a type-two action, there's nothing, no comment from the county. You'll find a staff report recommending that this variance be approved.
There's no sunroom here, right, it's just the deck?
Just the deck.
Yeah.
The deck.
It says sunroom, but I crossed it out.
Yeah, you don't have to amend it or anything.
Yeah, so in the staff report, just delete the reference to sunroom. And, okay, if there's no further-
I do, no one has a concern that it's, first of all, that there's going to be eight feet of fencing next to the neighbor, or that they'll be looking right into the neighbor's yard from the deck? That doesn't bother anybody?
I mean, that's the problem with any pool around those areas where you put a deck up, I mean, you're, there's no way to not look in the other people's yards.
Well-
Well, I-
Poke their eyes out.
I mean, I think the privacy fence-
Neighbor's not here.
Neighbor's not here, that's true.
Didn't send anything.
That's, that's true, but we're here, and unless everybody that lives in the house is only four feet tall, they're standing up, that privacy fence is not going to be that private. And I think we can take judicial notice that everybody in the house is more than four feet tall, so.
Well, but you could, you know, your, your, your argument would make it impossible to have any second-story windows in any neighborhood, I mean, because you could look out the window. And, and, you know, it's easy, most, most of the time, people are using the deck, they're either sitting there or they're in the pool, and seems to me putting a four-foot privacy fence is actually, you know, could be-
How about the impact of the eight-foot fence that's, that will be there, then? That doesn't-
An eight-foot fence seems to me no, no bigger intrusion than some people that put up sheds that are taller than that, at a, at a similar distance from, from property lines. Some, it just doesn't bother me, but, I mean-
Okay.
Well, I'm looking for a consensus here.
I agree.
Okay.
I mean, they, the neighbors got a notice, it would seem like if, if they were upset about something, would have gotten something in writing, or they would have been here.
How would that change our analysis, though? Whether the neighbors were for or against it, how does that change our analysis about whether or not it's an impact?
Well, because when comes and says anything, then I feel that they're okay with it.
What about the next neighbors? I'm sorry, what? I said, what about the next?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, the fact, whether the neighbor, for whatever reason, in fact, we've had applicants where the neighbors were, did not want to come in and, and say anything in order not to create disharmony in the neighborhood. So I, I don't think that you can, I don't think it's worth as much as, as perhaps you think it is, but I think that's our role, and I don't really, whether they are all for it or all against it, it doesn't change my analysis about whether it is or is not an impact.
The fence, four-foot fence.
It's an eight-foot fence. The deck is four feet off the ground, and the fence is four feet above that.
On top of the deck, oh, okay, I get it.
And it's right on the fence line, it is right on the fence line.
Well, technically, five feet from it. I mean, you have to have a railing around the deck anyway, would you feel better if it was open? Or you don't want it at all?
No, but, but there's another side to the pool.
Oh, so you think you should have put it on the other side? Well, he still probably would-
Doesn't it, doesn't it come off the house?
Yes, it does.
So it's-
I mean, you'd still be, still be able to see it if you put it on the other side.
Right, but he wouldn't need a variance.
Wow.
Fifteen, ten?
Yeah, he could put it on the other side, but it would be right smack and it would take up the rest of his yard.
That's true.
Would not have any use aside from the pool and the deck for his yard. He's, he already has a small garden.
Well, that's no longer a garden.
But there's also no way to attach it to his patio if we do-
And, right, and right now, the way he wants to do it, it attaches to his existing patio.
Yeah, I think part of-
I'm comfortable with it, I don't know how, the rest of you, but-
I am too.
I would rather see that, especially since no one's complaining, than to see it right in the middle of his yard and deprive him the use of his backyard, I mean, isn't that like the American dream? If he doesn't have to.
Well-
If a neighbor came in and complained, I may feel differently, but we don't have that, so.
See, in, in my mind, then you, then you should take the place of the neighbor. If you, if that, if the neighbor's complaint would make a difference to you, then I think your analysis-
It might, I said it might.
Okay. That's why I said if.
We need neighbors to come in.
Well, I, see, I don't give a lot of weight to the neighbor's opinions, because those change over time, doesn't change our analysis. In fact, the neighbors either-
Well, well, actually, Paul, yes, it, yes, it does, yes, it does, because if you look at the standard review, we're supposed to weigh the benefit to the applicant against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare.
Right.
And often, for us, it's the neighbors or people that are living nearby that suggest to us what might be detriments to health, safety, and welfare. Now, I agree with you that we have to weigh those and, and judge, and we can't, simply can't take everything that the neighbor says.
If it's just an opinion, I don't like it, it has no value. If you say, listen, this impacts traffic and impacts safety, those are opinions that we can take into account.
Exactly.
And I don't like it is not an opinion that has any weight.
Right, and, and, and neighbors-
But I do like it, has, have no weight.
Neighbors often are the ones that raise those to our attention.
Right, and when there are no neighbors, it's our, it's our job to look at those.
Right, because we have to apply this balancing.
And it, it seems to me that a, that a deck, four-foot-high deck, five feet from a property line, and, and an additional four-feet-high railing that's solid, it creates a big barrier.
Well, the alternative, if in fact-
Okay, I mean, is this, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if in fact you did put it on the other side of the pool, the alternative would be for the neighbor to have to look at them sitting around the pool, so.
Maybe they like it, maybe that's why they're not there.
Well, maybe they like not seeing them, you know?
For, for what it's worth, the neighbor also has a large pool.
Yes, a hundred feet away.
It's not even going to be looking in that direction.
If he's in the pool.
So, so you're suggesting that the two pools be able to look at each other?
Right. I'm listening to this whole discussion, and you know what? I don't think anyone's being all that subjective here. I mean, they are being subjective, they're not being objective, I mean, really.
Can, can you hear the television sets being clicked off as we-
I would hope so.
Ash I hope.
Hopefully.
We can only hope.
They're watching something else.
Yeah, yeah, Sandy said, we lost them a long time ago. Okay, all right, moving forward, so-
Item number-
Don't ask Paul.
Yeah.
I would not ask me.
Okay, so Carmen, would you like to make the motion?
And what item are we on?
Item five.
Item five, okay. Let me get my sheet, sheet here, I guess I had already gone home, hold on, okay. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts its findings and determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the variance request in item number five. There's no further discussion? I think we've kind of analyzed this one pretty well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Recousels? Okay, approved, six to one. Item number six has been approved, item number seven has been approved, item number eight, Colin O'Brien, twenty Crestwood Boulevard, this is the variance to allow a proposed front porch to be sixteen feet from the side lot line where twenty feet is required, and twenty-four feet from the front lot line where thirty feet is required. This is a type-two action, the county has made no comment. In your packet, you'll find a staff report recommending that this variance be granted. Any comments? Okay, Paul, you comfortable with this one, or?
Yeah, this one I'm okay with.
Okay.
You have that sheet?
Thanks.
I move, I move the board to approve the request for a variance set forth in item-
Well, I gotta do the EAF first.
It's a type-two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, Betty.
I got my eyes on the board.
I move the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number eight. Decision is based upon a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of the site visit by the board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, as findings, the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recousels, approved, seven to zero.
Okay.
All right, that brings us to the end of the applications, there are a number of correspondence items, and, I suppose we have to take these one at a time. You know, four of them are town planning board requesting lead agency status.
You could probably, I don't see why you couldn't take those together.
Okay.
I would take the time extension separately.
Okay.
And then just in the motion, name each one, so that when Sandy sends it back, so the planning board will clear that it's for each one, them four copies.
Yeah, okay, that saves some paper here. Okay, the, so as I said, there are four separate requests from the town planning board requesting to be lead agent on the environmental review for different proposals. The first one, Marist College Parking Improvements at Saint Anne's, thirty-three ninety-nine North Road, any questions there? The second is Marist College Parking Improvements Beck Place, thirty-three ninety-nine North Road. Any questions? Okay, third is the Theodore Subdivision and Site Plan at three Springside Avenue, I think this, this is in connection, this is the Tinkelman?
Yes.
Yeah, isn't, this is in connection, actually, this is related to something that we granted some variances for some time ago.
That was for the child protection.
Yeah, they moved in, yeah, okay, so this is, I believe this is simply continuing the-
Jim.
Yes.
Is this, is this for that lot that faces the, what is this in specific reference?
Okay, I, I believe this is the western end, it's a kind of a triangular property, and we, Tinkelman's offices, and then the new offices that they constructed are at the eastern end, and then there are a couple of houses that they rehabbed, and then, as part of the overall proposal, he was going to, he was going to continue, and I believe, is it, I think it's housing units.
I thought it was going to be a strip mall, but-
I thought he talked about putting a strip mall, and that strip mall then faces a community, there are people who live on the other side of that road, the fact that the strip mall is on the arterial.
Okay, but, yeah, to be honest, I, I have not seen the plans, so I, I don't know, I don't know, Brian, do you?
This is just for the agency, it's not for-
Yeah, this is the environmental review, I'm, I'm not sure just how far along they are in the planning and design process.
It's the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. It may very well be the case that this would be back in front of us for, for variances of one kind or another, I don't remember how that was zoned.
Well, probably will be, that's why they're circulating to you.
ATC.
Because you're involved.
Yeah.
Or a special use permit.
Yeah.
Some sort.
Okay, uh, okay, and then the third one, fourth one, lead agency for U-Haul of Poughkeepsie at twenty-one seventy-five, twenty-one eighty-five South Road, where is that, Brian?
Lazy Boy, next to Bonefish.
Oh, that's way, way down.
By Bonefish.
Bonefish, okay, 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 all right, so any comments on these? Okay, so without objection, I'll consider these all as one, I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA approve the request for the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board to serve as lead agent on the four enumerated actions before it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the final item, a time extension request for Friendly Honda for variances that we granted back in July-